Good evening and welcome to the June 30, 2025 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one item for discussion, and that is the federal government restructuring vis a vis the city, the county, the state. And just a little background, Sharon Disck, who's our Economic Development Manager, that's correct, put together a really, really powerful instructive presentation for the Economic and Business Development Committee a couple months ago, two, three months ago, something like that, and then presented it again before a joint municipality and county meeting, again, to talk about the same, we're all concerned about the same subject. And I thought it was so good, so instructive, that I asked Sharon if she would present it at a work session so the public can see it as well. And so here it is. Sharon, take it away.
Thank you. This is a great opportunity. I feel like I keep telling a story, and it just doesn't always resonate unless people start to see some key factors. So tonight, we'll look at generalized forecasting of the economic impact of federal downsizing. Data is still changing, and city-level data is typically released a couple months after state and county-level data. But we can look at broader trends in the information and anticipate what will happen next. So we'll get started. Often, we're looking at a response to the first few layoffs that were announced. I would say few, but they really weren't few in number. But it's not just a workforce emergency. It's what happens to our local economy when federal spending shrinks here. And here is a baseline of federal jobs in the region. So we've got the District Maryland, Virginia, and then the CAG, Council of Governments for Metropolitan Washington, where we see a total number of federal workers of almost 400,000 people. Locally, at Gaithersburg, we're looking at 3,748 federal workers in 2023, or about 13.6% of our Gaithersburg employment. And then Rockville, you see that is over 6,000 with 22.3% of their labor force. And then Montgomery County, 68,848, or 16.8%. Across the DMV, that's 17.3%. Now, what we do know, we do know that on February 26, there was guidance from Office of Management and Budget and the Office of Personnel Management that described how downsizing of the federal workforce would roll out. And it starts with a Phase 1, where there would be initial cuts. Those would begin March 17. Meanwhile, agencies were supposed to be coming up with their plans for larger-scale reorganization. Those plans were due April 14. And then Phase 2 is implementation of those plans. That's larger-scale RIFs, and that would start October 1. And then Phase 2 would continue throughout the current administration. What we saw in the beginning, in March, was basically initial cuts, but also attempts to circumvent the longer process that's required ordinarily in federal downsizing. So cuts that would have happened in October, there was an attempt to do that sooner. And then we saw court challenges. So this, I love how when I went to look for actual count, okay, how many jobs have been cut? It varies. So as of May, 61,296 per layoffs.fyi. Layoffs from DOGE, a total of 171,843 federal departures. NPR had a number close to the 61,000 of 59,000 federal jobs. And then their lead even had, there's more to the picture. So there isn't a fixed number at the moment.
And Sharon, those numbers are nationwide, not...
Those are nationwide. And behind those numbers, those cuts include terminations that were outside the ordinary process, such as DOGE-initiated cuts and the cuts that were challenged in court, buyouts which have been offered three ways: deferred resignation, voluntary early retirement authority, involuntary separation incentive payments, separation by choice, those people that just chose to leave, and then unfilled vacancies. And that's something that isn't really spoken of at the moment, but a hiring freeze has a greater broad impact on the economy. Those are jobs that have disappeared from our economy and will not be filled, unlike layoffs, where you see individuals who are harmed personally, have personal stories, are seeking other employment, that kind of thing. So unfilled vacancies are kind of that shadow out there that has a big impact on the economy over time. And then we looked at what actually can be measured at the moment. Are we seeing actual cuts? Because of all this change and court challenges and all, well, we actually saw for our Maryland suburban region, Frederick Gaithersburg, Bethesda, MSA, 1,500 fewer jobs in federal government between January and April. So there are actual cuts that have been experienced, but the magnitude is not what we anticipate will happen in October. And then, indeed, actually has become a fairly reliable source for activity related to recruitments. And this shows Maryland job postings pre-pandemic and then past the Trump inauguration. And you can see that the District of Columbia has had a steep decline since the Trump inauguration. Maryland has the next steepest, and then followed by Virginia, with the total for all trending slightly, not as steep, but still downward.
Sharon, is that attributed to the vacancies, to vacancies not being filled?
That would definitely be vacancies not being filled. Also, general, our government contractors would be rolled into this number as well, and the economy as a whole. So if an employer was hesitant to hire new people because of uncertainty, even if they were in the private sector, then they would not have a job posting. So there's a lot that's accelerating the number of jobs that are being advertised. Then we look at, okay, a lot of people think, well, we've pivoted to include not just federal government jobs here, but life sciences as well. Well, we have a lot of life sciences here. Here, we've got 3 million square feet in the Gaithersburg market of life sciences real estate. For DC Baltimore, 14.3 million. But what has really caused that amount of activity to happen in our economy is 1.7 billion in spending. That was just one year's spending in the region on NIH allocations. So even though we watched our economy diversify, it remained dependent on federal spending. And this is another indication of that. Using usaspending.gov, we can actually search for Gaithersburg as the place of performance and look at spending by government departments. And here are the top departments, and you can see, this is just for calendar year 2024. Department of Health and Human Services, 276.45 million dollars in Gaithersburg. And then DOT is after that with 246,007.9. Department of Commerce, which is NIST, 149.97. These are big numbers. And then who are the top recipients? Well, emergent, a known government contractor, 220 million, 220.33 million. Lidos, I like this. Lidos, we have to remember, there's Lidos, there's Lockheed, there's Lidos, there've been mergers. But the next three on the list, government contracting activity with Lidos or Lockheed. And then we can look at the proposed budget. I haven't checked the news in the last few minutes to know if it's anything more than proposed. But within that budget, it's possible to find specific agencies like NIST. And this is an example of what's taken right from the budget, a screenshot. And it shows scientific and technical research and services, and it has the direct civilian full-time equivalent employment, and shows 2024, actual, 2025, and then 2026. And you can see, in the budget, is a decrease of 465 jobs at NIST. So while we hear about the layoffs and all, what we actually see in the budget is, okay, what will payroll look like? And it's not possible to see something as specific for the agencies that are going to be rolled into a larger Make America Healthy Again, which includes HHS and others. Those don't have the specific 2024, 2025 data to compare, but we know that those cuts will be large, too. Then, within the budget also, is Community Development Block Grant. So the city is a direct recipient of that as an entitlement community. Our annual allocation isn't huge, it's usually under $300,000, but we do use that for down payment assistance, rental assistance. And the other thing about the Community Development Block Grant Program administered by HUD's Community Planning and Development Staff is that that is the same funnel for emergency assistance for disasters, Katrina, COVID. When Congress would allocate additional money for relief from a disaster, the money would flow through the block grant channels. The office would be eliminated, there is no allocation for funding of CDBG money for the next year. So I'm Economic Development, so I'm going to look at this challenge from an economic development perspective. Can our region replace federal jobs and spending with private sector employment and investment? Well, I think it's important to think of scale. And here's spending, and I compare the scale of federal spending with the city of Gaithersburg's resources. So our City General Fund for FY '25 was 80.8 million. Federal outlays in Maryland, that's grants and contracts. This is not Social Security and Medicare payments. This is just grants and contracts, 42.6 billion. So we're a city with resources of 80 million and a problem of 42.6 billion. And how about the scale of the county? So while we're at 80.8 million, Montgomery County's federal spending, Montgomery County is $30 billion. It's 26.27% of all federal spending in Maryland. Basically, we are the city, we are a city within a county which is the hardest hit across the country for the changes in federal government. Is our local economy growing fast enough to provide jobs for most of the dislocated federal workers? Well, we looked at job growth. Montgomery County, from September 2023 to September 2024, grew 1%, or 4,604 jobs. Well, we don't know how many federal jobs will be lost, but we can estimate. So we look at Montgomery County's federal employment, we look at a 10% cut, that would be a loss of 6,884 jobs. A 20% cut would be over 13,000. A 30% cut would be over 20,000.
Hey Sharon, the 4,600 were private-sector-only jobs, or both? The 4,600 additional...
That is total job growth.
So that included public-sector jobs in there as well? So the number's even less?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the growth rate we had. We would need to triple the county's job growth to absorb a 20% cut. And that doesn't even include the backsliding associated with jobs that are lost. It doesn't include contractors, it doesn't include increased unemployment due to secondary impacts such as reduced consumer spending. So when you have people that lose their jobs, they lose their household income, they do not shop, they do not go out to eat as often as they did, all of that becomes financially challenging. And that is the ripple effect throughout the economy. So displaced workers, many, if we're looking at a 20% cut, will not find replacement jobs here. Many will not. Some will, but many will not. And that means we have to attract new employers. So how do we go about that? Are we competitive? What's our regional strategic planning strategy here? Believe it or not, there is a checklist. In corporate site selection, how large corporations, and even smaller ones, choose their new locations where they're going to invest, they actually identify site-location factors. And there are publications that track this and have for decades. One is Site Selection, and that, I love the title, it's so obvious, right? But every year, they survey site selectors, and they ask the most important location criteria. So on the right-hand side of the screen, we see the list. Utilities, availability, cost, and reliability are at the top right now. Workforce skills are second. Land and building prices and supply, number three. Four, ease of permitting and regulatory procedures. Five is transportation infrastructure. Six, workforce development. Seven, quality of life. Eight, state and local taxes. Nine, economic development strategy. And 10, higher education resources. So that's what matters most in major site selections. And the criteria may change year after year. So for example, when unemployment's extremely low, workforce usually moves to the top. Right now, utilities, a shortage of electrical power is pervasive through the nation. So of course, cost, reliability, availability are at the top. But they also rank the top metro areas. I guess you could say we made it to the top 10 as far as the Washington area, because we tied with Phoenix Mesa. But this gives you an idea. While we are experiencing declining activity, there are parts of the country that are actually doing quite well. Business facilities, a competitor of site selection, they have their own rankings as well. And I love these publications, they can come up with millions of things to rank. We do rank well when it comes to things like tech talent, life sciences hub, fintech, AI growth hubs. The DC area does pretty well. Where we don't do well are characteristics like quality of life, best business climate for a large metro, broadband speed, or corporate headquarters. We actually have a pretty poor track record in attracting corporate headquarters. Well, how do we respond to an economic development crisis? How can we accelerate new job growth? And what can state and local governments do to offset the impacts? There's actually a toolkit, and you have to love a professional association, because what does a professional association do? Their members are in crisis, it's an international association, there are crises everywhere. They create a task force, they study things, they team up with FEMA, they come up with a toolkit, and they actually have a workbook to assist communities that are going through major economic upheaval. Now, much of the toolkit starts with what happens after the hurricane, the earthquake, the fires. We're rather fortunate in that while we're facing a crisis, at least our community remains physically intact. So we can skip over those parts of the plan in the workbook. But there is a list for post-disaster activities, they call it after the storm. But basically, you start out assessing the economic impacts of a major disaster. There's crisis communication. I love Chapter 8, assessing federal resources, that will not be an option for us. Then there's strategic planning and infrastructure, neighborhood revitalization post-disaster, and economic diversification after a disaster. So you can see that this is actually hitting the highlights of what needs to be done to address upheaval in our local economy. Right now, we're pretty much in the crisis communication phase. And what everyone did in March, all the communities around us, everybody created a webpage with links to hiring opportunities or resources, training programs, that kind of thing.
It wasn't just the people around us, we did it, too.
Oh, we did. And that has a role, and there is also the data collection point, you know, collect the data, find out what's actually happening. What I love about all of this was, we sort of coordinated amongst each other, and then we sort of didn't. And there was a whole lot of duplication of effort. We got to get past that if we're going to deal with a crisis. But here's a recap. The impact of federal downsizing necessitates regional cooperation to reposition the local economy. Area job growth cannot absorb a significant quantity of lost federal and federal contractor positions. That's that difference between the 1% growth and what we'll actually see in job loss. In business attraction, the area generally ranks poorly, and private-sector investment is highly unlikely to replace the magnitude of lost federal spending. For us, a decline in HHS spending will adversely affect the area's life sciences industry and its future growth. So we placed a bet, and right now, it looks pretty risky. And then we have this big picture of how do all these changes start to affect our economy? Moody's was among the first to downgrade Maryland. Quoting straight from Moody's, "Maryland faces greatest risk among states from federal job cuts and policy changes. Direct exposure to federal job cuts for Maryland exceeds other states. Maryland was already struggling with financial imbalances. Research and health systems that support Maryland's economy also face risks." Now, what does it mean? If this isn't addressed, what we're looking at is economic instability. Unpredictable demand for goods and services will affect the region's status as a prime location for institutional investment. For example, many of our shopping centers are owned by real estate investment trusts. They all have site-location parameters that guide their investment. The stability of the workforce, the average household income, characteristics like that. When we see change in that profile of our community, that is going to affect that institutional investor's choice. Do they remain here? What does that do to our property values? You can start to see how the impacts trickle. So further impacts, reduced household income and spending, outmigration, declining property values. This is if we don't see intervention. And then there'll be burden on local and state government, greater responsibility for community services with fewer resources. And that also happens as we watch federal assistance dry up. The need won't disappear. In fact, the need for assistance will probably increase, but the resources to address the need will shrink. And on that happy note, risk means more things can happen than will happen, you have to remember that. And forecasts create the mirage that the future is knowable, that we don't really know what's going to happen. But I can say this, we are facing a tsunami when it comes to our economy. We don't know how big it is, we don't know the exact impact. We do know there's a problem, and it should be addressed. At the moment, I'm not seeing a coordinated, region-wide effort to address change. But there's still time to initiate that.
Thank you, Sharon. I didn't say I wanted you to give the presentation to make this uplifting for people. So, you know, I knew, we've seen this before. Like, we knew that this was a very sobering and powerful analysis, but I thought it was really, really well put together and thought out comprehensively. From our perspective up here at the dais, there's no way to overstate just how top-of-mind all of this is. Starting in February, I think it was, I've been on calls with the State Department of Labor, thinking of the state level, trying to keep an eye, keep tabs on what, where we are in terms of unemployment filings and what other... I was on that call weekly, now it's bi-weekly, or now it's actually back to periodically. But all of the counties in the state were part of that call. City of Rockville and I were sort of interlopers as mayors that were on this call. But we would hear what people were doing, any best practices, job fairs, whatever they're trying to do to put together all the websites. We're watching all that happen in real time. And at the county level, our local MML chapter has organized monthly calls with the county Executive's Office, where we're keeping tabs and trying to see where we are and what we can do. We've collaborated on sharing resources for job postings, obviously, and job fairs. And you mentioned in your presentation, Mobilize Montgomery, which is a website of resources for people who've lost their jobs or are in danger of it. And you bring up, of course, one of the other sides of the coin, which is the grant situation. And CDBG could have a substantial impact on the way that we've allocated monies for social services and for affordable housing. And, you know, if we have $300,000 at stake, it pales in comparison to the $30 billion that the county has at stake. When you originally did this presentation, you brought up the toolkit, the Restore Your Economy Toolkit, and I did take a look at it. And I noticed, I noted what you noted as well, which is that a lot of it has to do, the beginning parts of it have to do with like a natural disaster or something like that, which isn't relevant. But I was wondering, now that I've gone through this preamble, if you had... Obviously, we don't have a lot of control over what happens at the federal level. We have a good delegation that's sensitive to all this, but they also don't have a lot of control. A lot of this is coming out of the White House and executive orders and such. But we recognize the need to diversify the economy. I think we've been working on that in Gaithersburg for, since Tom's gotten here, that that was our goal, is to diversify our economy and bring good jobs to the city. And I think there'll probably be some good announcements coming up soon that we can't get into yet. But if you were advising the county, or if, you know, or advising us further...
Or the state.
Or the state, like, what are the top few things we can do that could sort of best foster more businesses, headquarters, whatever, coming here and from the private sector, just a diversity of different kinds of businesses to make us attractive to them?
When it comes to large corporate site selection, you're dealing with an audience that already has the information about all your infrastructure and your workforce and the pay scale. It's not like it was 30 years ago, where economic development was almost more of a sales and marketing job. Now, companies can put in their criteria and using GIS, it will generate the top handful of locations that will give them the best value. Where can they operate most effectively at the lowest cost? So if the community doesn't already have those characteristics, then they are eliminated from the search before the company ever makes a visit. So that's why we've always focused on community preparedness in Gaithersburg. Are we ready? Do we look like the product that a company wants to be? Do we look like the product that a company wants to be at? And right now, Maryland and the Maryland suburban area especially does not look like that. If it's, if we think we're going to be pivoting to pharmaceutical manufacturing in Maryland, then in the Pepco region, we really need to clean up the electric that's available, water and sewer, all these things. We're looking at capacity, reliability, ease of permitting, availability, how fast can you get something new extended to wherever? So we, you know, if we're going down that checklist of site location criteria, how do we improve our infrastructure, road, water, sewer? How do we improve the availability of land? Montgomery County has, by choice, prevented development, large-scale commercial development in a good portion of the county. That was a choice. It might be something where they want to reconsider in the new world we're facing. But, you know, how can we affect the inventory of available sites? If you don't have a site for a new company, they're not going to come. And this is just a fact of life. So these are the kinds of things. Often, taxes are pretty low on the list in site selection, but, you know, labor, the location, the utilities, those are key. And we're not very competitive in those characteristics right now. So I would say ideally, first steps should be finding the right leadership, whether it includes elected as well as business, to affect the changes that are necessary to make us more competitive in site selection, so that we can be on the radar. You can't compete for a project if they don't even engage with you because they've already ruled you out. And that's what happens in Maryland quite often.
So laser focus on the site location criteria?
Yeah. If your purpose is to attract new employers, then become what the employers want. And that doesn't mean throwing out all the values we have and what we view to be important as a community, but it does mean make those choices. And if you pass new regulations, figure out the impact it'll have on employment before you advance another hurdle to employers. You know, kind of start looking at these decisions a little more deliberately.
Okay. Neil.
So some years ago, the city of Frederick had a flood. And the flood led them to redevelop their downtown area and make it, you know, an economic revival. What I'm concerned with right now is we're focusing on measuring the depth of the floodwaters and projecting how deep the water's going to get, as opposed to saying, the flood is coming. We don't know how deep it's going to get, but it's going to be bad. And what can we do? I mean, we're, the state of things today and the state of things in the future, we're going to have available real estate that we didn't have before because some of these offices are going to be available even more so than they've been lately. We're going to have a lot of well-educated people looking for something to do. The challenges, the other challenge is that in recent times, we've been very happy that we've diversified ourselves away from federal government contracting and toward pharmaceuticals and healthcare. But it turns out that that's highly, those industries are highly correlated with government spending. So we need to find some aspects of the economy that take advantage of the resources that we have that aren't wholly dependent on federal spending. So the question is, what is it going to take to organize the leadership around this region, the state and the state of Maryland, Virginia, DC, the business community, all these people that don't generally sit in the same room together and come up with some plans? I think that's the important thing. I think you alluded to that already, that it's not happening yet, but it needs to.
Yeah. And COG did convene the economic development directors of the membership communities. And it was interesting to hear the disparate opinions about, is there a problem or is there not? And while there were a few people that really saw a crisis coming, others did not. And this was a few months back, so perhaps that will change. I do kind of feel as though we've watched the first few months happen to us when action could have been happening. Eventually, it's going to be a crisis you can't ignore. But, for example, I've said, every other crisis I've ever dealt with, the legislature will create a committee, or, you know, the council will have a blue-ribbon panel, or somebody will, like, set up a committee if nothing else. And I'm not really seeing that happen. I know at Maryland Commerce, when I questioned the deputy secretary about this, he was saying the Department of Labor was taking the lead. Well, that is assuming that jobs are the only prob, federal government jobs are the only problem here, and that there are adequate opportunities for placement of federal workers. Well, you have skill mismatches, you have an absolute number mismatch of available jobs versus available workers. So this isn't a Department of Labor problem at the state. This should be all facets of state government. I'm a little frustrated that, like I said, time has been ticking, and we have not seen an organized effort. Mobilize Montgomery is nice. It is more or less focused on job placement. There is really no focus on the transformation of the economy.
Rob.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You know, this is the thing that we've seen in the news, too much chagrin, but I think your presentation reemphasizes that this is, we haven't even reached the tipping point yet with the Phase Two, and that's going to be very difficult. Right now going on is the votorama, which will have a huge impact on budget. Also, something that occurred recently was the release of the Defense Department budget. So a lot of the money, it seems, that was, if you watched the HHS secretary's testimony recently on their budget, they're taking significant proposed cuts. Now, whether that becomes reality or not, it just seems like the money's moving, and it's moving to the Defense Department. And so I wanted to get your thoughts on, I recognize you talked about attracting headquarter size companies or bringing large companies in and the difficulty with that. That's really like a unicorn, if you're able to attract a large employer to come to our state from either internationally or from other places in the country. What strategies are you seeing around kind of the organic growth of companies? Whether it is in situ companies that just want to grow, they want, they've bought into the Montgomery County or Maryland dream, they're raising their families here, they want to grow their businesses here, or startups, companies that just aren't there yet but will be the next Microsoft, or whatever the case may be. I've heard, you know, there's a lot of talk around quantum computing, there's a talk around artificial intelligence, there's talk around cyber, all of these burgeoning industries. And I hear about things that are going on mostly across the river, but even within the state, you're really hearing College Park area, Baltimore and North area, Howard County. I won't even mention that the MCDC is kind of leaderless or listless right now. I mean, what are you seeing to grow the ecosystem here in Montgomery County in the jobs that are not biotech?
I don't see much. You know, I mean, capital has dried up. Search activity is slim. I mean, it doesn't mean we don't have projects, but the activity is not there. And, you know, we really are in a period where so much is unknown that that creates a perception of risk, probably real risk in this case, and therefore, that makes investment challenging. Traditionally around here, it has been organic growth. And when we look at these site selection characteristics, you have to think of it also as those same characteristics affect local growth as well. If an R&amp;D company decides, oh, I've got a product, I've made it through FDA approvals, I'm going to, who's going to contract manufacture my stuff, and where are they going to be? It's probably not going to happen here. So when, we definitely have growth industries and talent that have potential, but across the river, we've seen the establishment so long-held of defense that the impact there is different than what we see on our side of the river. But we, you know, you go up to Hartford County area and all, you'll probably see some there. So, you know, there's activity, but it's slowed significantly across all sectors. And it's, we tend to think, okay, that's the country. But then, when I look at the rankings of these other large municipalities, when they rank headquarter activity, you see the hundreds of companies that have located there. Well, those may be headquarters, but you have to also figure, and how many other ancillary small businesses, medium-sized businesses, does that mean? Because if you're attracting the big ones, you're attracting the smaller ones as well.
Call that supply chain. Yeah. I mean, even the county, they're working some ideas right now. And I think it would be interesting for Gaithersburg and perhaps Rockville to plug in. The county's beginning an initiative to launch an artificial intelligence center of excellence in North Bethesda, for example. There are efforts involving cybersecurity going on in the county. And so I'm just, I hear about it, I talk to folks about it. I'm not getting the warm and fuzzy that there is a lot of push behind it. And I think that we're probably nimble enough where we could push them. And so it'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Especially in areas that are not biotech, which we love.
Yeah.
But diversification.
I would not, I've worked economic development in multiple states, Appalachia, Baltimore City, Philadelphia, covered all kinds of local economies. I will say that I don't see the kind of coordination in Montgomery County or Maryland that I've seen in other locations where, this will sound odd, but when you have a community that has a poor-performing economy, you usually see greater cooperation among the economic development entities, and the strategies become more creative and are actually initiated faster because there's a sense of desperation and everyone is unified.
Sweene talked over first. Jamil, go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Kind of pigging back on what Councilmember Wu talked about, you mentioned, you know, site selection criteria for establishment that are already created and what they move. And Councilmember Wu talked about where I was going, which is like business formation, like, what are the conditions that we as a state, county, city, need to have to foster and welcome new business formation? We have a great kind of test case with molecular biology, which became Metamucil, which is now AstraZeneca. That was a startup, you know, in 1988, which now employs thousands of people. Can you talk a little bit more about what does that ecosystem look like? What are the stacks that are needed to make that attractive and where I think we fall short? And then I have a few comments when you're done.
Yeah. Yeah. That is where you really have to say, it's almost the complacency we've had because things have been good. There's a lot of money in Montgomery County. There's a lot of money in Maryland. Do we see it focused on that ecosystem to grow businesses, to invest in what has potential, to maybe not invest out of state but invest in state? It might not be the same return or something like that. And I don't know if it's because geographically we're a small state, so it's easy enough for the individuals who are resident here with, that have the investment capital to, okay, you know, Loudoun County's not very far. You know, the boundary is imaginary to many. And so we don't really exploit that opportunity because there is a large intellectual capital, large financial capital, lots of creativity, lots of educational institutions to be the heart of innovation. And I think it probably has been more a case of complacency just because we've had it so good. Could that easily be turned on? I think that that is one of those things that a broad regional strategy would actually focus on. Yeah.
I've often heard Montgomery County be described as asset-rich, but systems-poor, which I think is a great moniker. And then when it comes to, like, I'm a huge life science, you know, supporter. And when we talk about cyber or technology or quantum, something that frustrates me is we don't, or I have not heard, like, the details of, okay, when you talk about cyber, are we going to make the chips, the software? What part of that stack are we bringing a competitive advantage that want businesses to move here? So in quantum, are we making, are we going to compete with Nvidia to make chips in Montgomery County? Probably not. So what is it, what is that special sauce that we have here? On life sciences, we have the MDs, we have the brains, we have the people, the chemists. So you can kind of see it more. So as we look to diversify, which I agree, what is that unique competitive advantage that we're going to bring, attract those high-quality businesses? I'm not seeing a lot of clarity on that.
Yeah. And that would be part of what a strategy formation would look like. You map the assets you have, and that includes the talent. And then you find your industries that match that, and where does our area have its competitive advantage? And after you've identified those, what is, you know, what is it that those companies are looking for? And does our community have those characteristics? So that becomes all part of the formation of a strategy. Right now, we don't see an organized effort to do that. The Comptroller releases a report prepared by the University of Maryland. The University of Maryland is going to create their own dashboard. Okay, well, you're not the only school. You know, isn't it better if we use the brain power of multiple institutions? Because not just getting a better strategy, you would also be getting better resources. And Maryland has this habit of being system-poor. It's just not well-integrated.
Thank you. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's sobering. It really is. And, you know, we've been living this for several months. You know, some of us with family in the federal workforce has, you know, has had a few white-knuckle moments. And some folks, you know, are living this. I mean, my, in my immediate social circle, you know, more than half have encountered layoffs this year, and we're not to October yet. So that's concerning. You know, looking at all of the data that you presented, and really, this was a really powerful presentation, Sharon, thank you. It makes me, you know, think, all right, how does Gaithersburg lead? You know, we just came from MML, and it was pretty clear, you know, seeing how we all engage there, that much of the state looks to places like Gaithersburg to lead. And if we're not getting the coordination that we want, then perhaps we need to be the tail wagging the dog. And, you know, I look to, you know, where are the gaps that industries need? You know, do we, you know, support entrepreneurship? Jamil mentioned startups. You know, are there opportunities for us to support, whether through an incubator or, you know, identifying what the needs of startups might be to create that environment where that makes sense? Or do we, you know, look to industries that have a skills gap? You know, whether it's coding or wherever, that we know that there's a need, that there aren't enough people doing X? And then partner with, whether it's Montgomery College or the universities at Shady Grove or, you know, whatever those partners can be. I mean, we've got Lake Forests looking to come online in the next five to 10 years, ideally with employment. You know, there's an opportunity right there to build something and attract something to Gaithersburg. So what are those areas that we could say, here's an opportunity? And then we start identifying those partners that we can start figuring out. What do they need? And then how can we help provide those?
I do think the scale of the problem necessitates, for example, what can you as council members do? Okay. Is there, did the legislature establish a committee to even focus on this? Is there, did the legislature establish a committee to even focus on this? I'm not aware of one. Okay, you have a rapport with the delegates, the senator. I think it does necessitate prompting people that you and your network know can affect change and helping to get an actual organized, focused effort that is greater than Gaithersburg. Because we really are, you know, be like, I got a bucket and this wave is coming. So, I mean, I think that that's imperative. For example, Mobilize Montgomery is nice, but it's focused on job replacement and the jobs aren't out there.
Right.
We could be looking at brain drain. Talented people have mortgages, they have families, they can get jobs anywhere. You already see foreign countries trying to recruit the science talent that we have here by offering greater intellectual freedom. You know, people are seeing our stress as their opportunity. So I think we have to continuously remember that while it would be great if we could do something active that will have a change, the reality is that is a very big hurdle. So for example, entrepreneurship, especially at the small startup scale, is going to have a very difficult time in the environment that we, that we'll see coming because it's going to mean there's less consumer spending. So if you're a business dependent upon consumer spending, this is not the, you know. Lending is going to be more difficult, interest rates will be different. The whole risk profile for new startups will look entirely different from the way it did before. So that has to be more of a coordinated strategy across multiple partners so that delivery of the services is less of a risk even to the partners. You know, like, we could dump a money, a bunch of money into something and it wouldn't perform. So that, I mean, it's very frustrating. But, you know, when I've worked in distressed communities, when they were recruiting potential employers, all the right people showed up. And if I needed the electric company there, they were there. Or the gas company, you know. We don't see that.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sharon. This presentation brings the fear level down a little bit. Knowledge is, will be, is a good cure for that. So thank you.
My anxiety level goes up.
It's better to know. I think for this area, complacency has been our enemy. And here we are with all the right people, all the right finances, and lacking in innovation. My concern is I looked at your slides, when we talk about quantum computing and as Councilmember Woo talked about AI center of excellence that we're looking at. I think Virginia has been there and been there doing that. And they've got the power in terms of utility to handle it. They're building these large data centers and then attracting the ancillary companies that need to be near these large data centers. Is, are utilities an issue for us in terms of growing our economy?
Yeah, and, you know, you think an office user, that's not much in the way of utilities. And a significant part of our workforce is in professional services. So, okay, that works and that contributes to that complacency. We wanna get into any of the manufacturing associated with life sciences beyond pilot scale, any of the data processing, advanced manufacturing, anything like that. Utilities definitely are a challenge. We're, an older community established infrastructure with policy choices that did not extend the infrastructure to significant parts of the land area. That's the reality we have.
Thank you.
Rob.
Sorry, I wasn't gonna mention this, but I might as well make the ask. And so when Jim mentioned the incubators, and so Councilmember Hernandez and I have been working with Councilmember Balcom and some others on this question of how to improve the efficiency of their incubators. And so in the most recent budget, actually, the CE proposed a structural change to the incubators in the county. And I've been working to try, with Councilmember Hernandez, to try to push to where I see the money's going, which is defense tech. And I may have mentioned to some of the folks who you may know who work in that area that they should reach out to you guys and we should work together. And kind of, and my thought process there is, you know, in the past, I know Tom and I have talked about NIST and leveraging the NIST Federal Lab Consortium. But that's really a drop in the bucket compared to what the Department of Defense budget is projected to grow to. And we just have all of the assets around us to be able to grow that industry. And I am a great big proponent of growing Montgomery County's economy. I'm a much bigger proponent of bringing as much of that to Gaithersburg as possible. And so it was gonna be an ask at some later date of us getting officially involved in kind of shaping this new incubator system that they're talking about right now. I think their RFP is gonna hit the street in the next few weeks. I think we should get, become a part of that conversation, see how we could work with them, perhaps see how Rockville can work with them to grow our larger ecosystem, but also ensure there's appropriate focus on Gaithersburg within that ecosystem.
And just to piggyback on that, I think, you know, in the private sector, our company was an incubator company. So we started with two people, we grew, we're over 50 now. And the challenge with incubators is, as we do, is that sometimes they're just office space. And that's not incubation, right? That's just four walls that are subsidized by the taxpayer. That's not enough to create viable businesses, you know. There's, you know, mentorship, guidance, working through the different channels. There's a lot of things I need to wrap around. You know, I talk about the tech stack or the incubator stack around it. So just second, you know, piggyback to what Rob said. It's not just, hey, we have some extra real estate in Gaithersburg. Let's put them up and we now have an incubator. That's not gonna, you know, make like a being so different.
Yeah, but actually contributed to the early success of Montgomery County incubators, and they are no longer like they used to be. But what distinguished Montgomery County's incubators was early on, they were focused on life sciences. And they provided facilities that were unique to the needs of startup life sciences companies. So it was not office space, it was space that these companies couldn't afford otherwise, deeply subsidized. But it gave the incubators the edge and their tenants significant bumps. And so you have to have an incubator that is more than an office space, that is a real value to the startup itself in order to make this a performing strategy here.
Those are the conversations we're having.
All right, is there anybody in the room looking at you from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? And if not, then I will look to Zoom. Okay, I'm not seeing you get up. So let me, if there's anybody on Zoom who would like to add something, ask a question, testify on this topic, just use the raise hand function and I will call on you. And I am not seeing a hand go up. So, okay. Well, this has been a great presentation. A really good conversation. It's obviously just the beginning of this. We, you know, as I said, to call it top of mind would be to understate what this is in all of our consciousnesses. So Sharon, thank you so much for putting this all together. I think we're gonna be relying very heavily on you for analysis in the coming months and maybe even have you back here for one of our meetings because I think the public gets a real benefit from seeing it too.
Thank you.
And with that, I will note the next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be next Monday on July.
Do you have to do an announcement for?
Is there an announcement we have?
The next session or is that next week?
That's next week.
Oh, I'm wrong.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, though. Good looking out. So next, the next regular meeting of the mayor and council is on Monday, July 7. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. Let's diversify our economy. We are adjourned.